I now declare that the Plano City Council Preliminary Open Meeting is reconvened into open session. And all council members are present. Even councilmember Prince, but we're going to get started. Our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration and action resulting from the executive session. And our second item is recording equipment guidelines at city council meetings. Steve Stoller. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. My name is Steve Stoller. I'm the Director of Media Relations for the city. And tonight, I'd like to talk to you about recording equipment guidelines for your council meetings. If you remember, before the council chamber was renovated, the media, the guys from the television stations that would come with their tripods and camera, would set up beyond the brick wall at the top of the chamber. So with the renovation, that brick wall now has glass, a window above it. So we considered the possibility of having these guys set up behind the window, and I didn't know if that was going to work or not. So what I did is I called the chief photographers of the four main television stations, Channel 4, 5, 8, and 11. And I said, "What do you think about shooting the council meetings behind the window?" And they said, "It's going to create challenges and problems because of the glare." Another one said, "We really need to be inside the chamber, because now if you're behind that brick wall, you're not in the chamber anymore." So we came up with some guidelines that I think are pretty good, and we bounced them off our legal department, so that had their muster as well. So the guidelines are not only for the news media, but they're also for anyone who wants to record a meeting. And now, when we say "recording equipment," we're referring to anything that's a tablet or larger. And really, mostly what we're talking about here is equipment that needs to be set on So these guidelines are designed not only to minimize distractions during the meetings, but provide a designated area for the news media and public attendees who have recording So the first space will be the back row here on the left, where that gentleman's sitting right there in the corner, maybe the first four or five chairs. And again, if we know the media is coming, this will be the area where we set them up. And if it's a situation where it's a controversial topic, or a topic that's going to have a very large audience, for example, short-term rentals, we'll reserve those seats, and we'll cordon them off, or we'll put little signs on the seats. And hopefully, and I believe there is enough room there for them to set up their tripods, and with nothing behind them, we won't be distracting anyone or blocking a view. Let's see, I'll show you here. You can see we've actually highlighted those seats. And then if we know it's, there's going to be even more media coming, or citizens that want to record, we'll also have the right side of the council chamber on the top row, four or five seats there. So most of our meetings for council consistently attract the print media, and we may have two or three people. And again, if there is a high-interest issue that we know is coming, we can generally predict when we're going to have a large turnout of media. And most of them let us know that they're coming ahead of time. So the news media plays a vital role in disseminating city-related information and getting our message out, not only to our residents, but to the broader community. And it's very important that we provide them and our citizens with access while maintaining decorum at our meetings. So that includes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Go ahead.
Just the logistics. So are they going to set up their pods on the chairs or on the seat?
No. No, the chairs will still be upright, like you see here. And there's enough room there where they can set up their tripod. They just have to put those three legs of the tripod closer together, and they'll be standing at their tripods with their camera like you always see them.
Behind their tripod.
Right. So they won't be seated, they'll be standing, just like they are when they were behind the brick wall.
I just wonder whether or not that's safe. Do you think that's...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Uh-huh. All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Next item, consent and regular agendas, items a council member would like to remove.
Mayor, we need to remove item N is November. We have a replacement at the council members' stations at the dais.
All right. Any items for discussion or future agendas? Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to form a study group to consider changing the name of Spring Creek to Parkist. Get it? Park, Parker, Parkist. Sorry. After eight years on this dais, I figured I had earned the right to tell a joke, and it's our first meeting of April, so April Fools. Withdrawn.
Wow, wow. That is...
And my cheesy dad humor is on full display.
Oh, my gosh. That's, that is so impressive, actually.
They might not get it, but sure.
All right. With that, we'll take a recess and return at 7:00. Wow. I now declare the Plano City Council is reconvened into open session. All members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by councilmember Casey Prince, and the Pledge of Allegiance, and the Texas Pledge to follow. Would you please rise?
Please join me in prayer. Father, in the name of Jesus, I thank you for this day that you've given us in this wonderful city. I ask you to bless our meeting tonight, to give us wisdom to make good decisions for our city. I ask you to bless everyone in our city. Keep them safe, keep them healthy, keep them strong, and bless us as we begin to celebrate this weekend for Easter. Thank you for the sacrifice that you made for us. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
So we have the 2025 Spring Plano Citizens Government Academy graduates today. Let's give them a... So I'd like to ask them all to come down, along with Shawna Haley, Phyllis Reese, and Wendy Lucas. All the graduates come down. So, "Good evening, class. I had the pleasure of joining you earlier in the program, and now it's an honor to celebrate your completion of the Plano Citizens Academy. Thank you for dedicating your time to learn more about the inner workings of our city. It is because of dedicated and involved citizens like you that we are a city of excellence. Plano Government Citizens Academy is one of the three Citizens Academy the city of Plano offers. All of our academies are designed to give participants a better understanding of city operations. If you haven't already, we hope that you complete a trifecta participating in the Plano Citizens Police Academy and the Citizens Fire Academy. Over the past 10 weeks, you've heard directly from 17 departments and our city manager, learning how services are delivered, how decisions are made, and most importantly, how every role in the city government connects to the community we all call home. I'd like to encourage you to take what you've learned from this program and share it with friends and family who might want to learn more about this great city. So graduates of this program have gone on to contribute in many, many, meaningful ways." So graduates of this program have gone on to contribute in many, many, meaningful ways, volunteering at city events, serving our boards and commissions, and serving as trusted voices in their neighborhoods. We hope you'll consider doing the same. Your experience and insights are valuable, and they do make a huge difference. I look forward to seeing you at the future city meetings, events, and perhaps even serving in a new civic role. Plano is better because of people like you. Now let's acknowledge and celebrate your achievement. I'm going to, or the staff is going to distribute graduation certificates, and then we're going to take a photo. Okay? I would be glad to.
They're going to raise their hand and call their names. We'll make it simple. All right, Adam Griffith. Adam, yep, raise your hand. All right, as we know, we're going to keep moving. Barbara Keeler. Yep. Barry Hampson.
Only on this side.
That's right. I arranged that. Bobby Chintapalli.
Congratulations. Thank you for doing this.
Bruce Cameron.
There's Bruce.
Chan Fung. Right onto you, right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Georgia Plant. Govin Vodvadgi. Right here beside me. Ian Davis. I'm going to give you the stack, and then I'll just read the names. James Sherrod. How about that? Jay, exactly, Jay Powell. Jeff Bolick.
All right, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jody Gilzine. Busy times. Kate Robbins. Right beside you.
Thank you.
Lauren Stokes. Manju Sharma. Mindy Mendez. Robert Thomas. Shannon Tillman South. Shirley Kay. Suzanne Sternwise. Victoria Lambo. And Yun Chung.
There, there you are. Thank you. Thank you all so much for being a part of this program, and I truly hope you got real value out of it and understand how well this city is run. And it's one of the things I'm most proud of is our 2,500 staff that works daily on making this the city of excellence, and I hope you've seen that and realized it. Let's all come right here and take a picture. Tom, guys in the back. And you guys don't hide. You're hiding. Come here. I see what you're doing. I've learned. I've learned how this works. Can we see? There we go. Let's put Georgia right on the front. All right. Thank you guys so much. Congratulations. So we have one proclamation. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I'd like to call up Michelle Lanier, Children's Advocacy Center of Collin County, Bob Care, CASA, Terry Green, Dolores Miles, and Susan Etheridge, Foster Friends, Shyla Henderson-Thomas in power, and Sarah Akers, Corley Randolph, Curtis Howard, Casey Backsley with Child Protective Services Board. Thank you all for being here. This is, um, this is the work of angels that you guys do and work so diligently in preventing child abuse in all capacities, and we can't thank you all enough. So I'm going to read this proclamation. Probably won't read all of it, but I do want you to know that whereas the month of April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to acknowledge the importance of helping children thrive in safe, stable nurturing homes in their own communities. Offering support to families in crisis is essential in preventing the abuse and maltreatment of Texas children. And whereas child maltreatment is a significant public health issue, communities that lack available support and resources can experience increased risk factors that lead to child abuse, neglect, endangering both the physical and mental health of children. Whereas each year, the month of April is dedicated to recognizing the critical work being done across our great state to support families and mitigate the challenges they face. Children's, child abuse prevention occurs every day through the diligent work and tireless advocacy undertaken by Texas families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies that support children and families in the city of Plano and across the Lone Star State. Now therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Plano, and I do thereby encourage all citizens to join me and the Plano City Council in supporting all organizations and individuals who work tirelessly to eradicate child abuse in Plano so that all of our children and their families enjoy a high quality of life in the city of excellence. Thank you all so much. How are you?
I'm sorry about your gap.
Thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging this.
We're going to, I'm going to hold this like it's a bouquet. Thank you guys so much. Thanks for all.
Thanks for acknowledging it.
Thank you. All right, I think comments of public interest?
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with thirty total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have six speakers tonight. Mayor, is the time still three? The first speaker is Sherri Hutchison.
Good evening. I'm here to speak this evening about an intolerable noise levels from a car wash that has been opened behind my home. I no longer have peace and serenity in the home that I pay a mortgage on. I am not only concerned about my health and well-being, but also the fact that my walls and windows vibrate for hours every day. I am concerned about what this is doing to the structure of my home and the resale value. On December the 13th of 2024, a new car wash had replaced the old one behind my home. Due to the fact that they have more rows of vacuums, a new car wash, and more high-pressure nozzles, the noise is intolerable. The old car wash had about ten vacuums and pressure air nozzles, and the new car wash has twenty-eight vacuums and twenty-eight high-pressured air nozzles. I filed a noise complaint with the city on December the 16th, and I was able to get five other neighbors to join this complaint. Louise with the city came out and at least stopped them from playing extremely loud music day and night for a while. Other than turning down the volume of the noise, I believe the car wash has done very little to combat the noise. Since the time changed in the spring, the car wash continues to be open before 7:00 a.m. and has stayed open as late as 11:26 p.m. at night. The car wash is much busier and noisy now due to the amount of cars that they service due to the warmer weather. From my experience, the car wash seems to try to get away with anything that they can. Then when one of the homeowners complained, they seemed to go back to lower noise levels. I fear that if we stop complaining, the car wash will leave the vacuums and high-pressure area open 24 hours a day and start playing their stereo system loud again. The back of my home is 25 feet from the car wash. The engines that run the vacuums and high-pressure blower nozzles are right on the other side of a short brick wall. These are like jet engines running through my home that causes vibration and high noise levels. My bedroom is the same distance from this equipment. I've driven through Plano and I could find, not find another car wash that sits this close to someone's home. I get up in the morning at 4:00 a.m., I drive into work, I work 12 hours, drive home, walk through my front door, and hear the noise from the car wash. It's right behind my backyard and I can't shut it off. I get four, I get a smaller window every night to sleep, and I get up the next day tired, knowing I have to go to work and I have no peace in my own home. I'm respectfully asking the city of Plano to step in and have a sound and vibration barrier built between the car wash and the townhomes. The barrier needs to be high enough to cover the upstairs of our homes where our bedrooms are located. I am also asking the city to work with the car wash owners to have them shut everything off by 6:00 p.m. This is the time. Oh, this is the time that the old car wash would shut down at night. They would shut all of their equipment down, and any maintenance that they did would also be completed by 6:00 p.m. I would also like to have the noise and the retail zoning ordinance updated to protect other homeowners.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Greg Hutchison?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm just here to back up, you know what, my wife gave you the whole situation. Um, I've been driving a truck for 35 years. I'm only home three days a week, and I just want to reiterate the fact that this noise, it's, it is intolerable. And on the days that I'm home, since I run at night, I'm not able to sleep at my home. I have to go back out in my truck, and I only get to come home one day a week now. So what she had laid out, that's all we're asking the city to do. And believe me, I know noise. I've been on top of diesel engines for 35 years, and the frequency and the vibration of this noise is intolerable. So that's what we're asking the city of Plano to do, is step in and do the best they can for us, because we worked, I've been working for 35 years to pay for a nice home in Plano. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Luciani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name's Dan Luciani, and I was one of the owners of Dewan Massage School, which was denied a certificate of occupancy last November. And I went back and watched the video of the meeting and cannot for the life of me understand why the request was denied by unanimous 8-0 vote, even though the planning and zoning had approved unanimously. And just the month before, there was another massage school that was unanimously approved for their certificate of occupancy at the, just right in that same time period. And after losing two years of time working on this, close to $200,000 in investment and setup for this business, and the loss of business associates, personal friendships, business friendships have all gone under because of this, I would just like to understand a little more about how the decisions are made when these things come up. As I said, I did go through and watch the council meeting and could not determine anything that was done improperly or that should have prevented a approval of this. So that's all I'd just like to say. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Cornelius.
Mayor and council members, I am one of the property owners of the school that tried to get in there, and one thing that Dan didn't mention is that in order for him to be given a license to operate through the state, he has to be fully outfitted, which means he has to be in the space. And yet you folks denied him use permit, the occupancy. So let me just help you remember what was said, because I don't think you heard it. I felt at all as I was reading this and listening to it that the council totally disregarded what the staff had concluded and recommended. Let me just go through what they had said. It is a permitted use, and it's by the right location. It's a low density based on the number of trips generated by its size of like 2,000 square feet. No negative impacts. Staff recommended, by the way, staff deals with the applicant, you just sit here and vote, yea or nay. Staff recommended that the school obtain a police approval, which they did. The staff finds that they're complementary to the other existing uses. The city approved a massage school, as Dan had mentioned, just down the street. The specific use permit for the trade school is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies, whatever that means. The staff did not receive any responses citywide that were negative. The use is complementary to the adjacent uses within the building and would not negatively impact them, which is a big thing for you folks, because you react to the negative reactions of people moving in. The use is below the intensity based by the number of trips, that's traffic. No negative impacts to the site or surrounding land uses, that's good. The request is in conformance with the policies and recommendations of the comprehensive plan, and the staff is supporting the request. Seven, that's this many, seven to zero. They voted for it. They're the ones interacting with the applicant. You all said, um, I don't know if we want to do this. Did any of you hear this report from your staff? They're the ones who are making the recommendation. So it just surprised me that the staff interacts with the applicant, not the council, yet you voted eight, zero, no.
Twenty seconds.
I find it odd that the representative from the school was present to answer questions, but the council never really engaged her. You had your own little huddle publicly. Have you ever heard of a conditional use permit? That's where you guys come in. The sad conclusion is that five minutes of Dan's time, two years of processing... The sad conclusion is that five minutes of Dan's time, two years of processing, and $200,000 invested, he was denied. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Palaciano.
All right. Play-Doh City Council, I'm disappointed in what I witnessed at my first city council meeting last month. I came here to share my own story about the atrocities I've experienced as a T-Mobile whistleblower, and somehow I picked the same city council meeting the Plano mayor and city manager would disrespect their firefighters in front of everyone. Let me recap what I witnessed. Plano firefighters, their family members, and firefighters from other cities showed up to share the benefits of why the 4896 schedule is better for everyone. I heard nine out of every 10 Plano firefighters want this new schedule. I heard logical stats about firefighter mental health being positively impacted. I heard about other big fire departments already adopting the 4896 schedule. I even heard from firefighters' wives that they're constantly working overtime, and this new schedule would help them have more structure in their family life. And I even heard a real-life example from a firefighter from Grand Prairie who showed up to support his Plano brothers. And then I watched the mayor read a script stating it's the city manager's decision. He doesn't want to do it. He doesn't want to be transparent and talk about why he doesn't want to do it, and he doesn't want to bring it up for six more months. What the hell is that? You call that leadership? And on top of that, you even cut the firefighter's talking time from three minutes to two minutes. So, yeah, you completely disrespected your firefighters at that last meeting. This is an absolute embarrassment, and it confirms what I've personally learned over the last 19 months. The Texas I grew up in is completely gone, and it's not coming back. Elected officials are not serving us Texans. They're serving private interests, mostly fueled by corporations like T-Mobile, or maybe even some businesses owned by your friends or family. Let me recap my story real quick. I'm a 41-year-old lifelong Texan who requested to be laid off from T-Mobile after 17 years so I could launch my own independent journalism business. I walked away from my $200,000 career and turned down my $150,000 severance just to keep my free speech about T-Mobile, because my plan was to use my T-Mobile whistleblowing to kick off my journalism, because I knew my whistleblowing would make me go viral. Now, I'm censored on every social media platform, and I can't make money as an independent journalist. I'm pretty much deleted from the internet, and the Collin County Court has been weaponized by T-Mobile's lawyers to come after me. Texas has fallen. I'm more Texan than Texas is in 2025. Before I go, let me invite everyone to my jury trial on May 5th, 2025, in Collin County Court Number 5. You'll be able to watch the Collin County DA's office lie to try and prosecute me on behalf of T-Mobile and T-Mobile President John Frye, the liar. Please come support me, because I want to fill up the courtroom. You'll get to see me and a few T-Mobile executives testify on the witness stand. I'll see you all at the next meeting. MarkPalaciano.com.
The last speaker is Amana Mohammed.
Mr. Mohammed, are you here? Okay. Move on to consent agenda.
The noise situation. Maybe the city manager could maybe give us more of the details of what transpired with regard to that.
Mayor Protem, our staff has been in contact with Mr. and Mrs. Hutchison and going out and measuring for the noise ordinance that we have currently in place. The response that we have out there right now is that they are in compliance with the noise ordinance that's there. You know, I take their statements, you know, from their perspective as, you know, as their statements towards what they're experiencing, but our ordinances have specific decibel levels that we look at. So, we have been in contact with them. We have been doing measurements. And again, I empathize with the situation, but that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Anthony.
In the request for a report or information from Mayor Protem too, but it sounds like we may have just...
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Second.
I thought we had to take off.
Yeah, we need...
No, you have to do the motion without "N."
We need to remove item "N" from the consent agenda.
Consent agenda without paragraph "N."
Okay.
And who seconded that one? It's fine.
I'll second.
It doesn't matter.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item "N." Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Item "N" is on your desk. Had some spelling errors on the actual, the name of the park. So, we've corrected that with item "N." So, if you want to make a motion to approve item "N" with the corrected resolution here on your desk.
I'll make a motion to approve item "N" with the corrected spelling.
Second.
I heard Maria first.
Is everybody... Who'd you got? Okay, so I got a motion and a second to approve item "N" with the changes. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Items for individual consideration. Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. Presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, the length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one. Public hearing in consideration as requested in zoning case 2024-26 to amend Plan Development 65 Central Business One to modify open space and signage development standards on 275.1 acres of land located at the northeast corner of Legacy Drive and Communications Parkway within the Dallas North Tollway Overlay District in the City of Plano, Collin County, Texas, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a rebeller clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Executives. I'm Christina Day, the Director of Planning, here to present zoning case 2024-26 to you this evening. So, the first slide we have is an aerial of Plan Development 65 Central Business One, which encompasses three primary developments, the shops at Legacy, Legacy North, and Legacy West. This portion of the amendment really applies only to the Legacy West development. So, you can see that on this next slide, we've got, there are tracts that have specific regulations associated with them in this Plan Development District. And the Plan Development District has existed since 1998. It's been amended numerous times to add to it, and again, 15 times since 1998, we've had amendments. So, what are the proposed changes now? Well, we're looking at increasing the usable open space overall, specifically by closing a portion of Water Street, decreasing usable open space in one area to allow a retail kiosk, adding eight sign kiosks and four large digital signs, two that face Windrose Avenue and two that are on buildings and two that are on garages, all facing Windrose. So, they're sort of interior signage along Windrose. So, what does this look like? Well, first of all, the closure of Water Street is at the intersection of Windrose and Waters, and this is to provide an activated space. The applicant's here and has a presentation that'll go into detail about that. It will no longer function as a through-street between Communications and Windrose. We'll need to readdress those sites. We have both businesses and residential units in that location, but we've worked through that process, and that is possible. It will add an outdoor stage and create additional open space. So, what does that look like? Here are the locations. The kind of central spine is Windrose. And so, you can see existing versus proposed. In the red circles, you can see the, or ovals perhaps, I should say, you can see the additions to the open space on the north side at Water Street, and then the removal of some open space where a kiosk will be located near the south side of Windrose. It's a positive net change. So, we move on to signage. We have garage signage that will be really in the entrances to the parking garage. As you come off Windrose, driving to the east, you'll see these signs. There's going to be one on the kind of north end of the development near headquarters and another one further from headquarters towards the south. These are the locations that have been indicated. The orange dots indicate the location of those garage signs as proposed by the applicant. Kiosk signage. There's no change to the other tracts, but in tracts, see only addition of eight total kiosks. They are used for any type of advertising. There's a separation of distance, and they need to be along Windrose. So, there's some restrictions there. These are the locations proposed. The red dots indicated by the giant yellow arrows show you where those are intended to be located. And then finally, we have some building signage that's proposed. These are large digital signs that will be facing Windrose on existing buildings in two different locations. There's a difference in the square feet. The one on the east side is limited to 400 square feet. West side is 900 square feet. So, here again is the map, the black dots indicating the location of these signs. So, looking at the comprehensive plan, these changes are really in the Urban Activities Center, which is supported by staff's analysis of the description, character-defining elements, and our infrastructure policies. The public responses we've received include 10 signed letters, all within the property itself, so within the Plan Development District. None of them are within the buffer area of 200 feet outside the Plan Development District. So, you can see two in support, one neutral, and seven in opposition. And then citywide, we have a total of 19 responses, five support, one neutral, and three in opposition with another letter that was received that's unmapped. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this case and recommends approval by a vote of seven to zero. With that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm available for questions you might have.
Councilmember Prince.
I have a couple of questions for you. Can you go back to the slide that's showing the map of where we're taking out the...
Water Street?
Yes.
Open space, yes. I think, is this map the one...
Yeah, that's perfect. So, I know that there's obviously times where it's, the traffic gets congested here, and it gets backed up on Legacy in some of the more popular times for people to come to Legacy West. And so, oftentimes, people will use communications or other ways to get in. Do we have any concern with closing off this street, that it's going to exasperate this problem?
Staff looked at this closely, because we had similar thoughts. This is very popular development, and so, we had the Transportation Engineering Division look at this closely. And one element is that the access is not fully closed off, because you've got the parking garage to the north. So, you'll come in off Communications on what was water. You can still go north into the parking garage and out onto Windrose. So, it's not as though the access is completely closed off. You'll still be able to get through. You just have to go into the parking garage essentially. So, that provides some access, especially for people that are utilizing that garage. But the results of that analysis by the Transportation Engineering staff was that this doesn't make a meaningful, it won't have a meaningful impact. So, they are in support of the change.
Okay, my second question is about, you mentioned that potentially there would be a stage going there. So, I imagine that means there'd be music, concerts, things of that nature. And with Legacy Hall and the other issues we've had there before with noise complaints from some residents farther north, and then this being closer to the residents to the west, do we have potential for this causing additional noise issues for those residents?
This was discussed extensively at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and they, I think the applicant did a great job of addressing the issues as far as a management issue and kind of what their plans are for the stage. I think they are aware of these concerns. So, I think there was some testimony at Planning and Zoning that the, some of the apartments that are close to McCall Plaza here downtown actually draw a premium. And I thought that was very compelling testimony that, you know, people will be outside watching, and that access actually becomes a positive for people that want to live in this area. So, do I think that could happen? Yes. Hopefully, the folks that don't like the entertainment will move elsewhere if this is approved, and the people that do like it will have better access, kind of premium access to the stage. But I would encourage you to let the applicant respond for themselves.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Day, for the presentation. Can you roll back to the slides where we looked at the two large signs? Not the ones over the garage, but that one. If we notice on the slide to the left, there appears to be residential property, residents to the left of that large sign there. Do we know what is across the street? Do we have similar residents across the street?
I do not believe so. Looking at the locations here, I do not believe there's residents. But again, I would confirm that with the applicant, because they're going to be more familiar with their property. But I do not believe so. There will be some across, you see from the location where the fountain is. There's residents there, but not at Earl's, which I believe is the larger sign.
My only concern here is if there is indeed residents across, the light pollution coming from that sign there glaring into their balconies. But if you're telling me there's no residential property there, then that eliminates that concern.
I would let the applicant confirm that. I am not aware of any residents in that location.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Protem.
I had similar questions, so I'll reserve mine. Okay. So, Chris, Christine, so, I can't get my questions correctly. So, those letters that are in opposition, is there like one sentence summary of what they're, I mean, what they're opposing? Is it the noise? Is it the traffic? Or is it the signage?
I think there's a variety of responses, but several were related to the signage on the garage, because they think they're going to be able to see it. There were also concerns about closing Waters.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing.
It's just the applicant group that is here to speak on this item.
All right. Come on down, guys, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Rupech Bhakta. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Prism Places and we are the operating partner for Legacy West Investors. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the council for your time and thoughtful consideration this evening, as well as city staff for all their time over the past few years. Whether it's a small project or a large project, it takes the same amount of time. So we just want to say thank you to the staff because they did a fantastic job. So thank you. Here with me this evening, we have Jessica Clements from Studio Outside to walk through the landscape design. We also have Barry Hand from Gensler to walk through the signage and design of the buildings. We also have Brad and Christie Oldham from the Oldham Design Group to walk through public art. Legacy West for the past decade has evolved into a top-tier mixed-use asset nationwide and boasting over 5 million visits per year and home to some of the best brands in the country. We are here this evening to make sure we can maintain that status and to push Legacy West to the next level. With competition, you know, coming around us, it's so imperative and important that we update and upgrade our facilities to match future demand. One thing I want to say, though, is we are very excited about this project. And through our presentation, you will hear key words such as warmth, activation, recreation, technology. All these key words have been the foundation of our design program. So with that being said, I'd like to pass the mic to Jessica Clements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time tonight. I think the team did a great job explaining this project, but I want to put a little bit more color on it. Again, I'm the landscape architect on the project and that's what we do. The project consists of two main areas and you can see highlighted here, the Entry Park is what we're calling, right off of Legacy Drive, and then the Water Street Block D, closure of Water Street in the main area there. Looking a little bit closer at Water Street, you can see here in the middle of the presentation the area that we're converting over to a pedestrian space. Once was vehicular, now will be obviously more for the pedestrian. And really, our focus here is trying to drive people to stay longer. And so we know through extensive studies in outdoor spaces and retail that by providing different types of ways for people to utilize outdoor space, it engages people and creates entertainment venues and all sorts of ways for kids and families and people of the area to hang out and enjoy the space. So you can see number five highlights where we will have a platform area that can function as a stage. I'm going to let Christie explain the art that's located there. And then the other bookend to the space at number six is a proposed kiosk that will have some food and beverage options at it. Again, just layers to the space to provide interesting places for people to stay and hang out. Along Windrose, we're also proposing some additions and we're really thinking of these as outdoor rooms. So living rooms, if you will, that are along the street. And we know that the Legacy West development is known for being a little bit more dense and a little bit more urban feeling, and we like that. But we also felt that with this project, we wanted to soften and as Rupech mentioned, warm the space up. And so the idea is in creating some outdoor rooms that are held in by planting so that people feel safe and contained and it feels like a space that you want to be. Underneath all of the existing live oaks that exist along Water Street, it creates great shade. And so we're doing this by taking out a few parking spaces and replacing it with the people space again. These images here kind of show the character of the spaces. You know, a lot more seating is what we're after as well. There's not a lot of places for people to sit along Water Street right now and we know that there's a high demand for it. And then you can see ideas of planting and trees. Some of the outdoor rooms will be defined by pavers that look like rugs. So again, just trying to bring in that warmth to the space. And then here's a rendering, sort of looking at the lawn area at the pavilion. The Entry Park has a similar intervention as along Water Street, but this is located a little bit more into the space that's existing there now. We're not closing any of the drives to create this. We are removing some of the parking spaces and you can see here, we're getting a little bit more of a larger, open area down here right off the entry into the Legacy West development. So the number five with the little dash line underneath it will be another pavilion space, offering food and beverage to really pull people down to the side of the development where there's currently a little less people walking. And then we will have some art down here as well, which Christie will talk about, increased seating and just refinements to the hardscape, more lighting underneath the trees. If you guys are familiar with the site, which I assume many of you are, you can, this is where the very signature live oaks that were pulled from the J.C. Penney campus are. So it's really our goal to make that space more usable. And again, some character imagery that looks at some of the seating, the softness that we're creating and just, again, really trying to make spaces for people to hang out in a perspective view. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Barry, who's going to talk about the signage and graphics. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barry Hand. I'm a principal and architect with Gensler. Our studio, which is a placemaking studio, started on this project in 2014. We've been working off and on here, tweaking, dealing with tenants, improving things since then. Christina did a great job going through the different sign types that you're going to be affecting tonight. But I wanted to kind of show you just real briefly the overall sign package that's coming to the project. Parking and signage is the lifeblood of these retail mixed-use projects, as you can imagine. Intuitiveness, ease of getting there, ease of getting out, ease of getting back to your car is truly the lifeblood of these projects. We often judge the serviceability of a project like this. So just real quickly, you're not acting on these, but I wanted to show you just a range of different signs, interventions, the identity gateways down at Legacy and then up at Headquarters. And then there are vehicular directionals, helping people get in and out of the project, parking directionals that you'll see. And then once you're in the garage, because there are five and six levels in some of these decks, getting to the elevator but then back to your car, it's a pretty standard color-coded graphic that we need to upgrade a little bit in the project. And then the little passeos that go from the street back to the garage, just improving a little bit the signage hardware that's on those. Christina showed you this map, the red dots and the orange dots and the two black dots are really what you're acting on tonight. So just really quickly to dial into those, you know, so much in retail now is about brand experience. Signage like this is critical for brand experience success, but it's also about communication to patrons, retailers, their omni-channel. Again, this is their lifeblood and it's to all of our advantage that Legacy West remain the top project in the North Texas market. There was questions about this, which we can answer quickly and then if there's more questions, we'll come back to. This signage above Earl's faces do pretty much south. You can see this is the furthest south apartments that it's next to right there. Check my time. So this sign is not facing any apartments. It's actually facing away from the apartments. And then you can see way up the street, the little J. Crew sign, which is here. So this sign does, kind of in an oblique fashion, face toward the fountain and ultimately across the plaza toward those apartments on that block. But all of these will operate kind of in a shutdown-type manner. We put them to bed effectively at certain hours of the day. There are no moving images. They can change images, think of a slide deck. They can change images on these if they want, but it could be a static, digital sign. These are the two signs that are way in on the eastern side of Windrose, the two static signs, this one's 30 by 48 and this one's 42 by 25. Again, these are digital signs that are so key in brand expression. I'm going to reserve the rest of my time for the Oldhams to talk about art. You're not acting on the art, per se, but it's a part of, an integral part of what we've got planned for the project. We think this is artwork, just like you see down in the Deep Ellum area or downtown. We think this is art that people will drive 25 to 30 miles to see. And that's key. In all these big mixed-use projects, that's what you're seeing more and more. So take it away, Oldhams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christie Coltrane.
I'm Brad Oldham.
And we're with Brad Oldham Sculpture and we're happy to be here tonight. We're going to fly through this, so I'm glad you have a hard copy of it. We've been doing this 26 years. We work all over the country doing placemaking sculpture and we're always happy when we can work close to home. Our studio is downtown Dallas and we're supported by a group of artists and craftsmen. Here's some examples of our work across the country and I show this because it'll be material that we're using at Legacy West. So in the upper left-hand corner is in Walnut Creek, California. Lower left-hand corner is an installation in Oklahoma City. Upper right, Surprise, Arizona. Lower right, in Deep Ellum in Dallas. And that's mirror polished stainless steel. So for the Water Street that, where the park will be, we found a lot of inspiration in the trumpet vine and that's because we wanted something botanical to kind of pull you in. There's two buildings and we wanted something vibrant and dynamic. And the trumpet vine, I want you to hold on to the color that you see. And when you see a trumpet vine, it's very dynamic. You know, it's almost like it's dancing. Okay, over the community platform will be this cantilevered, mirror polished stainless steel trumpet vine ballet. There's nine dancers. The dancers are the blooms brought to life. They're the attraction and the audience. The intention for this sculpture is that it can be a freestanding sculpture by itself or it can be a backdrop to something else. So like you heard earlier, there could be like some light music. There could be a yoga class. There could be a fashion show. I think there might be a marriage proposal here or at least like some annual pictures taken. Here it is in the rendering. And really, our sculpture comes together through narrative and the clay and Brad really brings that together in the personality of each piece. So again, the nine dancers are dynamically. There'll be light on each dancer so at night, there's going to be a beautiful nighttime experience or soft and wonderful. So what you saw happen in the park will then be again happening throughout the campus. There will be other dancers and this one is eight feet tall. It's sort of near the entrance park and her name's Misty. Oh, that was Martha. This is the clay and then Martha. So you're going to see clay pencil sketch, clay pencil sketch because those are, that's how we work and bring this together. Here between Starbucks and Mencino Farms, we've got the ballet class. We think this will be very relatable. There's, I mean, there's a lot of ballet and Plano classes, Metropolitan. And there's something about the dancing and the flowers that's very sculptural by nature and it's just beautiful. It's timeless. It feels athletic. It feels like there's just art captured here. And then here are the locations.
Yeah, so we engineer everything up to 150-mile wind shear, so they'll be very structural. They are bonded and grounded for lightning protection. Lighting is very simple. It's LED, it's low voltage. These are made out of a material that's a marine-grade stainless steel. It's highly durable, very low maintenance and these will be around way longer than any of us. But we're excited to be a part of this project and look forward to being a part of Plano.
And I did want to add again, we're site-specific artists, so there will be no other installation like this anywhere else. So we're really excited about doing this in Plano and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're here to answer any questions that you might have and we respectfully request your approval. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Proton.
I'm curious to know how long it will take to create the art, the sculptures and then to install them. What is the timeframe on that?
I'll start with installation. Installation on this project is about a five-day project. The big piece will involve a crane, but it's very low noise. It's not a very hard process to install them. The timeframe to build the piece is seven to nine months. So we expect to install this either very late in the year or the beginning of next year.
So do you anticipate creating all of the sculptures and installing them all at the same time or doing it over? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The bases, the engineered subflooring, that will all go in before they arrive and the power and things like that so that when we come in, we basically plug them in over a period of time. It's all planned out. It takes a lot of planning and it usually runs just very, very easily for us.
Part of the reason I was asking that question, one of my concerns and what was brought to our attention and letters of opposition was related to closing the street down. So I was curious if there might be an opportunity to do a trial run of temporary closures to see what kind of impact and feedback we got from residents and from people down there and didn't know if that could be done without slowing down the process of the installation. But is that something that's been discussed at all of doing a...
I think you're asking about temporarily shutting down the road to see what people say about it.
Correct, since we're talking about putting stages there and doing temporary types of events, which I thought would be very easy to do until we got to the part of your presentation with the installation for the art, which that looks a little bit more permanent to me. So I didn't know if it's even possible to... If that's something that you'd considered? Closing the street down, setting up stages and just making sure that the dynamics work well and that we didn't receive a lot of complaints?
Yeah, I don't know if I could answer that question. We might defer to Rupech as the operator, but we don't know what the oppositions were based on either, except that we did hear some anecdotes that it was from neighbors who were just used to the convenience of walking on Water Street, which will still stay. Obviously, it's a pedestrian corridor now, so we want footfall on the former Water Street block where it's blocked off right there. We don't really know other, what the other oppositions were either. As far as closing temporarily, I think that's an operations issue that maybe the operator would not... You know, we've vetted this for about, Christina, how many years? Four or five years now? This has been going on an awful long time, so...
Had there been any temporary events there that anyone knows of? Like... I mean, because we do this in downtown Plano quite often. We shut the street down, so we kind of have a trial run. We know what to expect. We know that people, the businesses down there have found that it's good for business. They like that people are down there. And so sometimes the fear of the unknown is really just the unknown and to give people an opportunity to experience what it would be like, I think might help to alleviate some of those concerns. And I just wondered if that's something that's been considered.
Well, we've shut down portions of the streets for wine festivals and larger events as well. So people are used to shutting it down. I met with the HOA president and their key concern was mainly Uber and Lyft drop-offs for food pickups because you got North and True Foods there. And their key concern was during lunchtime, it's peak hour time and a lot of the Ubers and Lifts come in and pick up their food and that's where it gets choked up. And when I sat down with them and showed them the plan, they looked at the roundabout and saw that they would be temporarily parking. They can kind of stage up. They were more receptive to that concept and I think that was some of the key concerns. And I think the other concern was the signage as well from seeing the actual sign from the street. And we talked about kind of shifting it behind the trees and they were very happy with that discussion. And then in terms of temporary closures of Water Street, we've tested it before in terms of other closures. I'm not sure if we have tested the Water Street closure yet, but that'd be a question for city staff as well. And the stage question, it's not a stage. It's a platform. We'll probably have maybe a handful of events per year in terms of concerts. It has to be acoustic only, no amplified sounds. So it has to be acoustic. It'll mainly be for yoga in the park, as mentioned before, PTA events, kids' events, mainly just to have open space for kids. And then most of the time, that platform will be a photo location. People can take photos of it, get married there hopefully, so stuff like that. So, thank you. thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. One question. Along Water Street, do any of the tenants, or I guess they wouldn't be tenants if they do, own their property, or am I correct in understanding that's all rental property, whether residential or commercial?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's pretty much all lease space. The complex is owned by one owner, as you probably know, but pretty much everybody at the street level is just a renting tenant.
Okay, gotcha. Along Water Street, because I know further up, you know, if you get to like Windrose Tower and Level Twenty-Nine, there are
Oh, yeah, yeah.
properties, but along Water Street, that's, that's pretty much all rented?
Along Water and Windrose is all lease space.
Okay, okay. And would that be from Water and Windrose out to Water and Communications? Would that be, that, that's all lease space?
Yeah, if you look at this diagram, from the cul-de-sac west, pretty much what you're facing there are ground-level multifamily units. That's the readdressing that Christina referenced. There's really no businesses once you get out that far. It's all multifamily and parking structure beyond that cul-de-sac.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. The, the reason I ask is because, you know, to the comment about, you know, if people don't like the closure of Water Street, you know, or don't like sound from events, you know, potentially there are options to go elsewhere. I just wanted to make sure, you know, that we're talking about rental properties and not ownership, because that obviously makes it harder.
Yeah, that's a great point. And, and this is an urban project with a bit of an urban vibe. I think that's a brand expression the owner does want to continue to project. Somebody on Planning Commission was a little more straightforward about if they don't like it, they'll move. That's certainly not our position, but, you know, people that live in, in urban environments tend to expect that level of energy, or they probably wouldn't be there. But back to Rupesh's point, this platform is really for fashion shows, kids' choirs. The operator will, will not want to do anything here that competes with the box garden. That is where they ramp up some, as you know, some pretty good concerts. That is in the box garden itself, but that would not be appropriate here on this very small lawn.
Thank you for that information.
Sure.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So, my concerns remains with the signs, and, and I appreciate you addressing it. So, the, I think, I'm not sure if they're called kiosks or they're called signs, because I'm looking at the, the ordinance, and it says, I think it's listed under multipurpose wall signs. Is that the one that's listed under?
Yeah, it's a great question. The multipurpose wall signs are the signs on the buildings and the-
Are they, are they the one that has advertisement on it?
Yes, yes.
And it would have LED lighting, and then you could, it will change every eight seconds? Is that what?
As much as every eight seconds. It's really just what the operator ultimately negotiates on that.
Right, so I think that's where my concern is. And I heard your solution to that, which is, it could be set to go offline at a certain time of day. So, tell me, since Legacy West to me is a foreign country, I prefer the old-fashioned east side, but, so, tell me the, what is the, the normal, I mean, you would consider to be a off time for, you know, signs like this to sort of go offline?
Yeah. You know, that too is something that'll ultimately be choreographed by the operator, but what's typical in an urban environment like this, and, and I'm just going to speak directly from our experiences downtown at AT&T Discovery District, if you've been down there, you know there's significant LED signage infrastructure. There are hotels directly across from that. And so, that particular operator negotiated basically to wake them up at seven in the morning when employees are coming around. There's kind of a, a quiet, subtle, dim message, and then as the day goes on, you literally build a run-of-show. Now, that's video, and I want to be clear, we're not doing that here. That would not satisfy your sign code. But the point is, there's a run-of-show that happens throughout the day, and then about ten, eleven, twelve, depending on the day of the week, it goes through a, they kind of put it to bed. That's the term. And it goes down to about five percent power, which is a star, you know, sky pattern or something like that. They don't typically turn these systems off, I understand, but they do power them down to two to five percent.
So, is that something that you would be willing to consider putting into the restrictions so that, you know, at sleeping time, that it would not be disturbing any of the residents that are in that area, especially the ones that's sort of facing a lot of the apartments, I believe?
Well, the J.Crew sign. That's the only one that's facing any residential. And then you look at way back on the parking decks, back here on either side of Legacy Hall, those faced due west. Those are facing some residential, but it's kind of cut off a little bit by, you can see the front gate space there, which I realize is now closed. But that particular front gate would be cutting off that second block of residential, and then the Block H, where Louis Vuitton and Tiffany is, that, that sign, because it's also so deep, would be cut off to most units. But yeah, we, we anticipate some form of shutdown at, late at night.
Yeah, I would, I would be more comfortable if there is some type of limit as to, you know, when the, the LED lighting is going to continue to, to, to shine onto some residence apartment.
Right.
And, and who knows what these advertisers may do. They may come up with a more ingenious way of, you know, shifting their, their advertisements so that it becomes more flashing lights rather than just your standard, you know, photo. So, that would be something that I'm interested in. I appreciate you bringing that up as one of the solutions.
Thank you, and this is probably a question for staff, but my primary concern is the concerns of the tenants and nearby residents at the villas at Legacy West about traffic impact. And echoing Deputy Mayor Protem, I'd probably be more comfortable with, I'll call it a medium-term pilot. I understand that when road closures happen for events, festivals, et cetera, that's very short-term, and people might be mildly irritated, but they adapt, and then the next Monday, it's business as usual. And we discussed this as well with the downtown Plano thoroughfare plan, is mimicking the, the change in traffic patterns over a longer period of time holistically. So, if we were to do maybe a three or four-week pilot, just to measure the actual traffic impact, I'd probably feel a lot better. And I'm not sure what staff looked at regarding the anticipated traffic impact, other than the ability to go through the parking garage to navigate in emergency, but that probably wouldn't be ideal as a, a new flow of traffic.
Right. No, I wasn't trying to suggest that that would be a flow, but just that the access wouldn't be completely closed off. I think this is something that we'd need to take a deeper look at. There, right now, there's an access easement, a fire lane that goes through there, so having something obstructing those for an extended period could be an issue for us, because, again, we'd be blocking a fire lane. So, I just think we need to talk through how that works, because if this were approved tonight, they would be replating to abandon those easements. The temporary, I don't think we'd want to abandon them temporarily. It's a permanent condition. So, we need, I think it's possible. We just need to figure out how.
Councilmember Prince?
My question is about the parking spaces. You mentioned that you're getting rid of a number of them in order to add the green spaces. How many parking spaces are you removing?
It's thirteen.
Okay.
Thirteen parking spaces. So, there's six kind of in the middle, one up where we're, we're going to make the new turnaround on Water Street, and then six down on the other side. We are keeping all of the accessible parking spaces in their current locations and not shifting those.
Okay. I know parking can be challenging sometimes, so
Sure.
there's no concern about removing those thirteen spaces?
No, those thirteen spaces are really just convenience parking, and so, we, we have ample parking in the parking garages in order to, to support the retail development.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes, thank you. Again, I like your presentation so far and everything, but it is concerning about Water Street, and I'm just wondering, have we done any, or have we performed any traffic study about how many cars actually use Water Street? Do we know that? Has there been any data collected on that?
This is Destiny Woods, who's the project planner.
Thank you. So, ATIA was performed by our traffic department, and so, and it was approved by our tra, traffic department. I don't know the exact number of cars that go through each day, but there were no substantial issues found with that traffic analysis.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get to is the fact that we, if we come down, the main drag went into Legacy West, and if you turn, if you turn east, you go into the parking garages to get to the frontage road to come down the toll road. If you're trying to turn west, to try to exit, we're taking away one of the main thoroughfares to get us to, I assume that's, is that Communications, I, I think. So, we're eliminating one of the turn, turnoffs to the western side. And this is where I was kind of asking, before we go there, how many cars use that road? I mean, do they all go to the very far north, or do they take the further south entrance to turn left to get to Communications, to get back to Legacy?
I, I think we don't have the answer with us tonight about what the traffic impact analysis included. It would be my assumption that that would need to have included that to be part of there, but I, that's only an assumption. I think we would need the engineering department to provide a follow, some follow-up information to you.
Let me add something. Councilmember Horn, let me just add something for reference, or kind of context. The vast majority of parking on the east side of this project is residential parking, you know. I don't know what the number is, but the vast majority of retail patrons park off of the service roads from the tollway on the east side of the project and walk in. Those paseos that I showed you with the signage above, that's really coming from the east side of the project. The original developer, Mr. Carahan, built this project with ample parking. I mean, over and above what the original parking consultants kind of ordered up in the beginning. He knew. He knew what he needed for his business, and he wanted it built for the busiest day of the year. And so, you'll know if you go there from time to time, the top one or two levels of that deck tend to stand pretty empty on the east side. So, that is where the vast bulk of the patron parking is. I used to, with my daughters, drive up Windrose and occasionally turn at the food hall and go in to that parking on the east side, but generally, when people get used to this project, they'll enter it from the east side off the parking, off the tollway service road and walk in. That's really the normal progression into the project. We really don't want to encourage any more traffic on Windrose than there is right now. Part of the purpose of closing Water Street was to eliminate one of those intersections. We want this to be a pedestrian environment. Cars are there kind of for theatrics. Jessica mentioned the parking we've closed. That parking on the street is an nth of a percent of what's required in this, in this project. The on-street parking is theatrics. It's to set up an urban environment. And we've replaced, I think, a half dozen of the spaces along the street with these furniture groupings or living rooms, which have barriers of large planters to give people the perception of safety with cars going by. But if you've been there late on like a Friday night, you know it's kind of a drag. It's a, it's a who's who of great cars, right? And we want to keep that traffic moving slow, and we want to keep it, we want to limit the number of crossings and intersections. So, there is kind of some science behind the art here.
Barry, I just wanted to include for the council information that Water Street is actually a quasi-street right now, so it's not a main thoroughfare. It doesn't get a ton of traffic. And then also, to iterate that, it's really closing Water Street and turning it into a pedestrian park is a part of a larger plan for the area, and we know that there are future parks over on the former J.C. Penney site that are, the city of Plano is actually planning. And there's also future development in the area. So, in, I've seen it myself, standing there, over on the J.C. Penney campus, the amount of people who walk from Cal West over to Legacy West during the lunch hour specifically is crazy, and that's only going to increase as development continues to happen. So, to create a green spine where Water Street currently is, we think will really amplify the area, and, and people will learn new behaviors for how to move their car. And there are plenty of places for the car, but there really are not plenty of places for the pedestrian. And this is a dense area within Plano, and so really celebrating that and allowing for that to happen, I think is really going to change the space in a positive way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Shelby. Thank you. Everything I've heard so far is very interesting. I think that with the four or five years that you've been working on this, it's obvious that you put, everybody's put a lot of thought into how it's going to come together and to try to make it really accentuate the development, this legacy. And, and that's what I hadn't heard any of us mention yet. This is legacy. This is not a retirement facility or retirement zone. I wouldn't live there, but that's because I don't really care at my age about all the hubbub and hubba. But we have ventured out very bravely on some weekend nights to see what's going on and to have, have dinner, and it, it is a place to see and be seen. The, the, the traffic on the roads are everybody and from Ferraris to Corvette, I mean, you name it. They're there, and they're driving, you know, two miles an hour, you know, down the street to enjoy their vehicles. PD can probably attest to that, that there's a lot of, you know, high-end traffic out there, and sometimes they, they do pull out on the main streets and make a little bit of noise. But I, I just think that anyone that has chosen to reside there knows what the area is, and if, if they didn't know it, they didn't spend much time there. So, I, I think it's a thoughtful development. I think it fits legacy, and, and I'd like to see us, you know, give the approval to make this thing happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Shelby?
Well, I was going to say that I have no problem at all with the concept. It looks nice. My concern is really the concerns, like I said, that we've heard from tenants and nearby residents about the potential traffic impact. And I don't want to, I don't want to vote against this. I was going to propose maybe that we table it pending even a two- to three-week pilot, just to see what the real impact would be. I don't want to stymie the project, and I don't want to necessarily deny it, but I personally would feel a lot more comfortable with a limited pilot to ascertain the traffic impact.
Well, if I may, we're, we're now, we either need to close the public hearing and, and discuss it in, in that manner, or ask any more questions with the applicant. So, go ahead and finish your statement, and I'm closing. Well, what I was going to say, talking with the team here, if it was part of the approval, we could go through a two- or three- or four-week pilot shutdown, just to learn from the behavior. You know, it's springtime. There's a lot of people going to be out over the next couple of months. So, if we could agree that, let's go through kind of a temporary barricaded-type mock-up of what we're proposing, I think you'll find that people gravitate and love it pretty quickly.
Well, and I hope, do we still need to go to the?
Let me close, let me close the public hearing. Casey, do you have a question, or can I close?
Yeah, you can close it.
All right. I'll close the public hearing, confine the comments to the council. Casey?
First of all, I want to say, I appreciate that, because I think we consider Legacy West still new, right? Even though I think it-
It's eleven years old.
I know. Yeah.
But it does.
I, I approved it when I was on planing and zoning, and now, that was a long time ago now, so. So, I appreciate that we're, we're looking at how to keep it thriving and vibrant now, and we're not waiting till it's dead like some other things that we've worked on while I've been on council. So, I appreciate y'all doing that. And I agree that some of these, I think, are great ideas. I, I personally spend too much time here, shopping. So, I, I, I know this area very well, and when I'm there with my kids and trying to wait in that very long line for ice cream, y'all could use a second- y'all could use a second ice cream place. I'll just throw that out there. There is nowhere to sit, right? You're in that very long line. There's nowhere for anybody to sit and eat their ice cream, right? So having another place where people could enjoy their ice cream and not just be trying to keep their kids from running into the street. I mean, that, some of this I, I see as very practical as a mom with two kids, that you're trying, they're wanting to run around all crazy. So I, I do appreciate some of these things. And I'll say, I, I hear my fellow council members that would like to, because I brought up the concern about, is this going to work? Because I like cutting through communication or cutting through Water Street because it's faster. And let's not get rid of that, but. They're putting a lot of investment in this. And the artwork alone, to say, let's do a pilot while they're investing in all of this artwork and all of this. I just, to me, that doesn't seem feasible. So I think we just need to tell them one way or the other if we're in or out. So I would make a proposal to, a motion to approve this.
I'll, go ahead, Rick.
I'll second that.
Okay. Julie, you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for answering my questions. I think you did a really good job of addressing those concerns like Maria. I don't get over to that side of town very often. I was at a concert there a couple of weekends ago. And you're right, there's cars just cruising down, being seen. And, and that's kind of what it is. If you're not familiar with the area and make, turned down thinking you can get in and out and you learn quickly, if you're a regular there, that's not the case. And I'm, I, I, it sounds like it's exactly what's needed as far as to make it a place that people want to stick around longer, make it a place. I know my kids are bigger now, but when they were younger, it was nice to have areas that were pedestrian safe, that they could run around, get ice cream and sit down with them. So I, I appreciate all of my council members' feedback and input because it's helped me feel confident in, in supporting this as well.
Thank you. Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll echo a lot of the points that have been made. You know, my main concern was the permanent closure of Water Street. That actually is how I normally enter Legacy West as well, similar to council member Prince. You know, it's, it's convenient, I live off of communications, so convenient to enter that way. But where I come down on this is that I think it's really, you know, a, a property rights issue. Water Street is not owned by the city of Plano. Water, Water Street is a privately owned quasi-public street. And I also, that's why I asked about, you know, ownership of the properties from, on, on Water Street, from Windrose to Communications. Because, you know, if somebody said, hey, I invested as an owner and you're closing, you know, the way that I access my property, that would be more concerning to me. But given, given that the, you know, the, the main owner of, of this property owns, you know, both sides of Water Street owns Water Street, you know, I, I think it's appropriate to let them refresh it as they see fit. You know, and, and obviously with, with a rental, you know, at the end of that rental term, you know, it could always be terminated anyway. So it really comes down to the, the property owner. I also, like councilmember Prince said, I, I think it's, I think it's, you know, very forward thinking to be thinking about a refresh while Legacy West is still fresh and still doing great. And so, you know, for, for those reasons, I'll be supportive of this zoning case. Also, as, just as a point of procedure, I know that councilmember Williams had a, a motion to table. I could be wrong about our rules of procedure and I don't know if he still wants to make that motion, which just for full disclosure, I would vote against, but.
I don't think that was a motion.
Oh, okay. I, I thought, I thought I heard a motion to table.
It was a comment.
Oh, okay. I, I thought I heard him say move to table. So I was going to say, I thought there was a motion.
Okay. Maria, briefly, I think, all right, we're wearing each other out. I can't, I can't tell Anthony no. He's about, he, he's about to have to stop talking here.
Okay, I just, well, yeah, well, good luck. So I, I just want to know, I guess I am the only one that's really concerned about a sign. I just want to sort of get that feedback from the council members.
Well, I'd like you to go visit Legacy West one day.
If, if that is true, then I will withdraw my, my request for a limit on the time for the, for the signage. But is that true?
No, I think, I think that is going to happen. Implementation will, will occur with the timing of those signs.
Implement of?
Implementation of, of how the, the, when they come on, when they go off. And, and I think it'll be, you know, based on experience, what Legacy West wants, what the city will recommend, things like that. And it'll probably have a lot to do with how, how, you know, Legacy Hall has a limit of what they can and can't do.
It'll be consistent with whatever the, the norm is on Legacy West. Is that, is that what you're saying, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
Okay, no problem then.
So I have a motion as second to approve item number one. I will tell, tell real quick, Dolly, our favorite event is Juneteenth fashion show. And that is the best event. So that's coming up. I'm looking forward to it. I have a motion as second to approve item number one. Please, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you so much. Thanks for your patience. Thanks for having us. We look forward to seeing you out there. Thank you. Item number two.
Item number two. Public hearing in consideration of a resolution of the city of Plano, Texas, adopting the 2025-2029 Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan, outlining the use of community development block grant and home investment partnerships program funds and provided, provided by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Curtis Howard, Director of Neighborhood Services. And I'm here to talk to you about our five-year consolidated plan. This will be the second time that I've visited with you on this. So we'll get some final feedback and I will ask for you to approve this, this plan as we move forward. So just a little bit of information, if you remember correctly, we received two federal grants from Department of Housing and Urban Development, the CDBG funding and the home funding. And the, basically the three HUD objectives are to provide decent housing, suitable living environment, or expand economic development opportunities for low and moderate income persons. So the process that we have started on is, I said, as I said, I've been here back in March and provided you information and got some feedback. Today is the, the adoption, public hearing and adoption of that plan. We are right now in the process of going through the grant application process with CRC. Those every Tuesday and Thursday night, late into the night. CRC hears that and will eventually come up with recommendations for this body to make a determination of how we're going to allocate that funding. And that presentation of CRC funding recommendations will be done in June. And then we'll also have the annual action plan and the public hearing sometime at one of the council meetings in July. And then our consolidated plan deadline to get it to HUD is, is in August. So just a little bit of information here. As you well know, we've got basically two different funds. And, and CDBG fund is kind of a, a fund that provides a, a lot more flexibility for us to work with, gives us tools to work with, to deal with a lot of those problems that, that, that we have within the community. We also have our home funding. That home funding provides a little more rigorous way of, of dealing with some of these fundings. They both kind of had different ways of dealing with it. And what we try and do is we try and layer the different things, the different possibilities onto some of these problems that we have as a community and kind of work through those things in addition to the Buffington Grants funding that you give us. So a little bit here is on CDBG funding. So, you know, we've got 20% of that can be used for administrative funding. We've talked about that several times. 15% is that bucket of money that we use for those soft or social service type issues that we normally have. And then we've got 65, which are eligible activities, which are more kind of in the ground type, building type stuff that, that we use with some other, some other options. But it provides some flexibility. And so, you know, you can look at this for our, our, our funding for this current fiscal year. Habitat was given $94,000. The city of Plano was given over 800, almost $900,000. And you can see because of their, their differences in how we determine eligibility, 60% of, of area median income for, for Habitat, 80% for us. So we have the ability as a city to provide some of those people, some, some hopefully rehabilitation services that may not qualify for, for Habitat. And then also, I just wanted to put in here, one of the things we have is we had $116,000 for my possibilities. The reason I put it in here is that will be spent this fiscal year, even though that money was allocated in a previous fiscal year. But because we can kind of layer that stuff and that will, that will carry over, we wanted to include it. So in addition to that, we've got kind of the social services side of this. And so the, the agencies and the nonprofit partners you funded were the Assistance Center of, of, of Collin County, which is homelessness prevention in amount of 122,000. Samaritan Inn in the amount of 55,000. City House with 27,000. Homeless Sheltering at the Texas Muslim Women's Foundation and 33,000. And then also the Family Place. And I believe, Councilman Smith, you at one point asked, oh. He left, all right. So when he looks at the recording of this for, because in order to respond to his question from the last time, you know, he asked kind of what is going on, where are we at here? And so just to give council kind of an idea of how we are allocating that money and how it's been allocated. So the Assistance Center of Collin County, you know, right now we've got 54 residents that we have provided over $53,000 in, in CDBG funds. And so that's going to be rent and utility assistance. Now that is going to be limited to short periods of time, you know, three months. And so it's, you know, it's not a long-term solution to some of those problems, but that's where we are. City House, you know, we provided assistance to young adults. And so far in the first quarter, over 7,000, almost $8,000. Transitional Housing and Case Management for, for folks at the Samaritan Inn in the amount of 55,000, almost $56,000. Texas Muslim Women's Foundation provided assistance to 11 survivors there. And then the Family Place, and they provided counseling service to 21 homeless youth. But at this point, we have, they have not submitted their, their request for funding yet. But my guess is, is it will get here at some point. And, and so in addition, so as we talk about CDBG funding and the ability for us to use CDBG funding and some of, again, this is kind of an easier bucket of money to utilize to deal with some of these problems. And so I think some of the requests from, from you, Councilman Riccadelli, were asking about, you know, what, how much are the houses worth that we are providing this sort of assistance for? And so I want to kind of talk to you just about one of our partners, which is Habitat, on one of these rehabs. And so we have a, a case here, you know, and, and I'm going to step back and talk to you. You know, one of the things that we get at the city of Plano is we get requests for assistance all across the board. And I know it comes into the council email. I know it comes into the city manager's office. It comes into our, to Neighborhood Services. I get emails and calls on a regular basis. And they are for people who are having problems. And they're reaching out to the city to, in an effort to try and solve those problems. And we have a bucket of tools in which we use. And whether it's going to be our grade up rebate, whether it is using our volunteer groups, whether it's using some of the programs that we have, that we have through the CDBG and home funding, we have the ability to respond and, and hopefully deal with these problems. Not all of them, of course, but, but some of them. You know, one of the things that we see on the code enforcement side, you know, we have, as we've talked about, that aging housing stock. And with that, you know, we are dealing with people who just don't have the means to deal with some of the problems that, that comes with homeownership. You know, older retired folks, handicapped folks. And so we do have the ability to deal with that sometimes. And so some of these issues that we have come from those situations where we may have code enforcement issues. And it gives us the ability to do something. In this case, you know, this, we had, somebody reached out because there was a code enforcement issue with, with a, somebody's roof. We looked at it, turns out it's an 89-year-old resident taking care of their 64-year-old adult child at that point. And, and if you look at what, you know, the home inspection found, we had all sorts of problems. So this is going to be something that, you know, we were able to reach out, work with our, our, our nonprofit partners Habitat. And they spent $20,000 in CDBG funding to deal with this issue. And if you see kind of the first two top pictures, you know, the house in, in itself, that tree was one of the things that was removed. Some of the, the roofing was fixed, some of the gutters were fixed. And they removed the tree as that bottom, you know, at least on my side, right-hand picture shows. You know, in addition now, and, and here's the problem. If you go back and you look, it is Habitat for Humanity of Collin County. And we, since, since Habitat is in the county, they are not Plano-focused. And so there are going to be a lot of needs within the county that Habitat deals with. And so we talk about a capacity issue. And because we don't have the nonprofit partners that have the capacity to deal with all the problems, all the complaints, all the issues we give, we certainly, within Neighborhood Services and our community services team, deals with these problems. And so we have a situ, you know, we have funding that we, our staff can go out there and provide some of these, these, these residents, some of the, you know, try and help some of the, these houses. Again, another modest house in East Plano, where you had a, an 87-year-old retired PISD bus driver. And so, you know, she called the city because she was having issues, a, a call that we get on a regular basis, an email that you get on a regular basis. And again, we had all kinds of problems here. So this was going to be something that we were able to spend $65,000 in CDBG funding. As you can see, you know, they tore up the front yard. We have those pipe issues, she had a sewer issue. Dealt with some of the slabs, some of the concrete work. And so we're able to provide some sort of assistance. So we've got kind of a broad array of, of tools to deal with those social service issues. And then we've got some other issues that we can target specific homeowners that have these problems that would not be in a position to, to resolve these themselves. So that is CDBG funding. So now we go on from CDBG funding to home funding, which has, has kind of more restrictions that we have to deal with on, on this sort of thing. And again, we have a 10% administrative fee that we, that we use. And then we also have kind of that, that 15% for our CHODOs. And then also if, which, which is kind of the most restrictive aspect of that. And then we've got kind of that general 75% that we can use for various projects. So, and, and a lot of that is going to be Habitat. Habitat is going to be one of our, our CHODOs and then also a partner in rehabilitation. Again, the city of Plano's rehabilitation program, we use that. We also have, provide that first time homeowner's funding. And that we have talked about last time, we have $150,000 that has already been allocated for that, that has not, because we have not been able to find qualifying applicants. And so that is still, still just waiting to be used. And we'll talk about that in a minute. And then also tenant, tenant-based rental assistance. And we talk about tenant-based rental assistance using home funding. This is going to be tenant-based, tenant-based rental assistance for those people that are chronically homeless, out on the street, living in their cars, don't have a home or about to be homeless. So this is going to be more, instead of that general helping people that just need a little bit of, of help, it's going to be for that chronic population, that real difficult population. And then some of the issues that, kind of some examples here on how this works. So Habitat for Humanity. So, so we've got four projects that are going on right now in the city of Plano. And I think we discussed this at, at least in an email. And so one of the things that we have is, is we've got a Habitat house. It was first built by Habitat in 2000. The original owner passed away and Habitat kept the first right, the right of first refusal on that. Purchased it back and so they were able to use $232,000 in home funds to purchase. The second one was a, a house built in 1959. It was owned by Agape at that point. And they wanted to make sure that, because they didn't need it anymore, they wanted it to make sure that it went to somebody who was low to moderate income. It kind of still fulfilled that need. So again, we used home funds for that. And with home funds, one of the things that we have to do, that, that makes these projects so expensive, if you're using home funding in order to provide some sort of rehabilitation on home, you have to bring the home up to code. CDBG does not necessarily have that same requirement, home funding does. And that, of course, adds expense and everything else to it. So those are the first half, first two through, through Habitat. And our other CHODO here is, is Housing Channel. And so what they've done is we've got two infill homes that are being built, being completed. And that is going to be over in the Douglas community, right across from the African-American Museum. And so in, in this situation, one of the things that Housing Channel did is work with the community. I know we had some, you know, we've had issue, other issues, at least with, with one, one house that was built there that we addressed last time. But they worked with the Douglas. But they worked with the Douglas Neighborhood Association, the churches, the Plano African-American Museum, everybody involved in that. And so we used home funding then in order to deal with these homes, and eventually we're going to have the ability then to sell those homes and to qualified applicants. And so in discussing the issue that we talked about with the first-time homebuyer program, and so here's my proposal. I knew that was a concern for council during the last meeting, and one of the things that I would propose, instead of just doing away with that completely, allow us to use that as a tool. And the tool is, is since we've, right now, we have four homes that will be going to those people or families that qualify. And this is a tool that can be used to provide them the assistance to get that, to purchase that home and make sure that it remains affordable. So limit the program to qualified buyers, and that are buying those nonprofit developer homes as opposed to just any home out there, because, you know, it just hasn't worked. Our economics here in Plano do not, are not supportive of that sort of program right now, and we understand that. But that would be my request right now. And so that leaves us with just the proposed goals, as you've seen before. So sixty-eight housing units to receive rehab, repair, or reconstruction, two new affordable housing units to be added, and we should meet that. And again, these are goals, and that doesn't mean that we can't exceed them, and that doesn't mean we can't change these as the environment needs or requires. Eight low-income households to be provided with affordable rental housing with tenant-based rental assistance. And then to deal with the suitable living environment, then 350 individuals benefiting from direct homelessness prevention services, 400 low and moderate-income persons to be provided with public services, with an emphasis on special populations, 220 persons experiencing homelessness to receive that sort of overnight shelter, and then finally five additional emergency shelter beds added to the existing inventory for our homeless population. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we start the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I hear you on the providing first-time homebuyer assistance. I personally would, I agree with some of my colleagues about that money being spent other places. I would rather see that money help some single moms in our community who are struggling to stay in Plano and keep their kids in Plano schools. I do know that there are moms in Plano that they've tried to find places and shelters, but they may have too many kids, they may have four kids, five kids, and it's hard for a single mom to find a place when you have five kids, right? A lot of times the shelters, they have place for a mom and one kid, maybe two kids, but when you're a mom with five kids, that's very challenging. And so what happens is these, you know, moms, they move from city to city, right, trying to find a place, and then your kids, they get shipped around from school to school, and that's just setting those kids up for failure. So I would rather put more money into helping those moms find a stable place so that those kids can have a stability, have a stable place to be, because it's not the kids' fault, right? So if there's more way to shift money to helping some of those kids in our community, that's what I'm in support of.
And I think, and so here is the problem that we have, right, is that, you know, we provide some rehabilit, some home rehabilitation programs through the city. We then rely on our nonprofit partners to do some of the heavy lifting in some of these other areas. So, and I understand the request, here would be the limitation, is right now, because we don't have nonprofits that are building those type of homes, we're, you know, we're certainly working with our shelters and those other entities that may provide that sort of thing. But without somebody stepping forward and saying, hey, I'm going to build a facility, however we're going to do it, it makes it hard for us to provide that sort of service to, let's say, mothers with children who are fleeing domestic violence.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, when we say we're giving money to Collin County Assistance Center, right, do we get to put parameters on it that says, hey, we want a certain percentage to be set aside for people that live in Plano that are this type of, in this type of group? Or do they just have full rein to do whatever they want with the $53,000 that we're giving them?
So the Assistance Center, so the Assistance Center is our rent and utility program, so the requirements for our rent and utility program are three months, you know, it's like a three-month, short-term stay that we provide, that sort of thing. So can we put other things on and say, hey, you can only use this funding if you have a single mother with four kids? I don't know if I know the answer to that, I can find that out for you, but I'm sure we can put a lot of parameters on that sort of thing, on how they are doling out that funding.
They have to be, for sure they have to be a Plano resident, right?
Correct, yes, yeah. They have to qualify, and they have to be a Plano resident, right? They're not coming from Dallas.
Okay.
So, so yeah, but that is a limitation, you know, a limitation in this, in this, because, you know, in all these problems, we're dealing with a very difficult population. And so that is, that is a limitation, limitation dealing with a difficult problem, population, limitation in dealing with nonprofits who have the capacity to do and do these big projects, right, these big, these big-ticket items, which is sorely needed in Plano. And understand, understand your concern. So thank you for that.
Rick?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Curtis, great presentation, just a couple of clarification points, actually. The CDBG and home funds are HUD, federally funded. In this current environment here, I mean, I see your proposal for '25 through '29. In our current federal administrative state, have you worked out, and your team worked out, any Plan B in case HUD funding gets cut and slashed as we see in other administrations?
We're on a wing and a prayer right now with that. The information we receive is that HUD funding is safe, but understanding the current dynamic environment that we're in, we don't know. And so, you know, if the funding goes away, that's certainly going to offer us a challenge in what we want to do. You know, it's going to prevent us from doing a lot of the things, and, you know, this plan may have to be significantly revised if we lose all of our funding. So, yep.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Curtis, for the great presentation and for your work on this. I agree with what Councilmember Prince said, and, you know, obviously I mentioned on March 4th, and we've discussed in the interim, my concerns about the first-time homebuyer assistance program, primarily that it confers a huge benefit on a very small number of beneficiaries, instead of using resources to confer a more widely dispersed benefit among a larger number of beneficiaries who are in need. And my understanding is that the basis of your recommendation not to entirely get rid of it is due to the federally mandated set aside for community housing development organizations or CHODOs, which for a long time we haven't had a CHODO. And basically Habitat for Humanity is stepping into that role, using the CHODO funds to build houses, and then the proposal would be, since they have to be under federal law, sold at appraised value, the proposal would be to use the first-time homebuyer assistance program only for assistance with buying those houses constructed by the CHODO?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. And do we think that the houses built by the CHODO can be sold otherwise, or is there a concern that individuals who meet the income qualifications to buy those houses would not be able to afford the down payment at appraised value? Is that the concern?
One of the requirements is that those houses need to be sold at market value. So what we're looking at is, you know, and one of the problems we have is having CHODOs come in here and do this sort of thing. And so if we are, I think one of the incentives that we provide by the proposal is that that then tells CHODOs that, hey, we're going to try and do all we can in order to make sure that people qualify to buy, purchase your homes that you're doing. So, yeah, so there is, I think that there is, let's see. Yeah, so there are some limitations on the amount, first of all, of funding that home money can be used for. So, I mean, if it gets too high, you know, that may reduce the amount that the first-time homebuyer is allotted. But, yeah, in order to answer your question, it would just, it allows those people who meet the low to moderate income requirements, whoever that is, to reduce that mortgage even after the property's been sold at fair market value.
Gotcha. And so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, would we then be funding the first-time homebuyer program from the CHODO set aside, that 15%?
No, because that CHODO set aside, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to, because we already have money set, in fact, we already have money already, 150,000, $155,000, that could be used for at least, you know, three of those four homes. So, so no, it would not come from the CHODO set aside, it would come from that other bucket of money that we have a problem spending.
I gotcha. And so when you said the money that we're having difficulty spending, I know the CHODO, we haven't had a CHODO for years, and that's been, you know, kind of piling up due to the lack of a, of a community housing development organization that was interested in taking on Plano. But what other money were we having difficulty allocating?
And that 75% right there, you know, that is, you know, we're using home funds because of the home funding, we'll say, sometimes the difficulty of spending those funds based upon the regulations, the regulatory framework. So that would then allow us to use that, out of that 75% bucket, as opposed to the 15% bucket set aside for CHODOs. Now, the 15% is minimum, so, you know, we can move that around as we, as we need to if we have more CHODOs come in. But I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, that did, no, thank you for all of the great information. And final question, before I guess I give a comment, it looks like in that 75% of the home funds, all of the funds that are, you know, proposed to be allocated for the first-time homebuyer down payment assistance could be reallocated to tenant-based rental assistance to help families who are in the situation that Councilmember Prince was describing, is that correct?
Could be, if we, yeah, so if they are homeless or about ready to be homeless, if they met those qualifications, then that, that sort of funding can be allocated to any of those, any of those programs. So, yes.
Gotcha. And so I guess, and thank you for all of that great information, Curtis. So I understand the issue with the houses constructed by the CHODO, but if it's not an issue where the houses would remain empty and can't be purchased without that down payment assistance by anybody who would qualify, you know, I would favor what Councilmember Prince said. I just think we have so many people who have pressing needs that the first-time homebuyer down payment assistance, you know, confers a huge benefit on a very small number of beneficiaries, whereas tenant-based rental assistance can, you know, provide that, that just extra oomph to, you know, help people who are barely making it or not quite making it, you know, be able to make it and stay in our community. And I think we can just help so many more people through, you know, through that program than through the first-time homebuyer down payment assistance program. I'd prefer to see that money reallocated away from the first-time homebuyer program. Just, I still like doing the class, but I would just prefer to see it reallocated away so that we can have a more widely dispersed benefit and help more people.
We can do that, so, yeah, and we will still have the class.
Okay, gotcha. Well, that's fantastic. Thank you so much, Curtis.
Shelby?
Yes, thank you very much for this presentation, Curtis. I echo Councilmembers Prince and Rick Adeli in that, I mean, we're getting this money from HUD anyway. We can either take the money or not, but there are restrictions on how it can be used. And with the money, some $2 million all told, we can, we can try to do the most good out of it for each dollar we get. And two things in particular, the first-time homebuyer program and the acquisition, resale, or new constructions, outside of the required carve-out for the CHODOs, they confer, like Councilman Rick Adeli said, an enormous benefit on a very few people. Now, not discounting at all how much of a benefit that is for the people who receive it, but I'll talk about the first-time homebuyer first. The challenges I have with that, and again, it's a great benefit for the people receiving it, but for everybody who's receiving the subsidy as part of the first-time homebuyer program, and I'm fully on board with the education, but everybody who's receiving that subsidy is kind of edging out of the marketplace, somebody else who might just not qualify for it, or just might not even know it exists. And with limited housing supply, that's a person who might be interested in first-time homeownership that is not otherwise going to be able to attain that benefit. Now, I served two terms on the Plano Housing Authority's Family Self-Sufficiency Committee, and it served exclusively, single mothers, who had to save up a certain amount in order to get a matching amount from HUD to attain homeownership. And what struck me was a dichotomy of participants in that program. There were people who were super motivated to achieve homeownership, and they worked their tails off, and they didn't let anything get in their way, and they were truly inspiring. Conversely, there were people who wanted the, and were motivated to get the matching bonus, if you will, the funds that were being offered by HUD, but they were very afraid of losing other government benefits. Like they would receive raises or offers for new jobs, and they didn't want to take the new job because their income would go up above a certain amount, and they would no longer qualify for a given benefit or their housing benefit, and so they wouldn't take the jobs. They hemmed themselves in to that artificial constraint. And with the first-time homebuyer program, one of my concerns is that, apart from the educational piece, that it's not only denying those dollars to a much broader benefit for the entire community and to the individuals who directly benefit from it, but we're artificially enabling some people who may not be ready for it while edging out others who are. Regarding acquisition, resale, and new builds, yes, we have a shortage of attainable housing, but the amount of additional housing that we can provide in the community through these funds is not even a drop in the bucket, and it doesn't move the needle in terms of market, housing attainability in the marketplace. And when we talk about things like education and especially homelessness prevention, and I would put rehabilitation for qualifying owners, not talking about rehabilitation and resale, but like the people whose homes are dilapidated and they need foundation work, they're 86 years old, they have no wherewithal to get that work done, that's where I think, if there are going to be any significant expense from these funds, that's where I think it's most worthwhile, in addition to the rapid rehousing, shelter provisioning, and the tenant-based rental assistance. That's where I think we can, as we've talked about this over the years, we can focus the most good for each dollar that we do take from HUD to provide a better safety net for the entire community.
Yeah, difficult population and difficult problems, understand.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree with what both Anthony and Shelby said. Can you help me understand, though, on the homes that the CHODO are building or that are acquired and rehabilitated, what limitations can be put on purchasing them? Like, you said they have to be sold at market value.
But they're going to low to moderate income folks.
So, okay, so we are limiting the ability of anyone to come in and purchase it as an investment or something like, okay. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm fully understanding why your recommendation is to spend those dollars for the first-time homeowners. It would still, those homes would still be available to a population in need, correct?
Yeah, and I think, I think one of the reasons, one of the rationales is we want to make sure that we encourage CHODOs to come build here, and by saying, hey, we're going to assist those qualified homeowners in purchasing those homes, that provides an incentive for CHODOs to come and, you know, and work. Because having a CHODO here, our history with CHODOs is, you know, it's hard, and based upon our economy here and everything else, that's a difficult, it's a difficult ask for our nonprofit partners.
So I understand we don't want to ask them to come build a home and then not have someone ready to purchase. I mean, do you think right now, in... Do you think right now in our market that that would still be a concern?
You know, I don't know. I don't know enough about the market, especially in dealing with those people who are building low-income or housing for that population, how that's working, and I wouldn't be able to...
So, I don't know if we're restricted in how we use those dollars. Can we put any kind of insurance in place to let the CHODOs know that if we don't have a buyer, that we have dollars that could be used, or do we have to make that decision now?
We can always amend the plan, and I think I've been here about three times with amendments. So, if the market changes, you know, again, this is, you know, we give this to HUD, right? And this is what we're planning on doing, and a lot of things can occur that affect all this, and if we need to, we can certainly change it as needed.
Because I do agree with what I've already heard as far as wanting to help as many people as we can and stretch it as far as possible, but I also want to make sure we keep encouraging the CHODOs to come here. So, if we can do both, that would be great.
Yeah, fair. I understand.
Short, short. So, Curtis, I just have a question, because last time when we talked about this, I believe the council members were all not very much in favor of the first-time homebuyer program.
That is correct.
So, this time, you're still asking for some first-time homebuyer. I just wanted to know your perspective, why that's important in your proposal.
And the proposal, understanding it, I think, you know, Councilmember Rick Adeli, Councilmember Williams talked about, you know, that, those issues. And I don't think that I did a great job of just explaining, at least, having that ability to assist those qualified homebuyers, you know, a family, and provide them that first-time homebuyer assistance, which is allowed under these programs, to come in and buy those homes that we have. So, that was the only, the reason why I wanted to at least offer that proposal, to make it, at least to give you an idea that, you know, we don't, we want to try and encourage CHODOs here. If you're going to build here, we want to make sure that you get somebody who is qualified financially, and we are going to provide that incentive, which would reduce their mortgage rate and make it easier for them to remain housed.
Are you saying that they're somewhat interlinked with the CHODO remodeling and then bringing somebody who is also lower bracket, who may not qualify, to buy this CHODO home to...
Yes.
Assist them in buying the CHODO home?
So, you know, we've got CDBG funding and we got home funding. CDBG provides, you know, a lot more versatility on using that funding. Home is more restrictive, and this is one of the tools within, you know, I mean, and these are very complicated programs.
I understand.
One of the tools that we can use to provide that sort of assistance in dealing with some of these problems, you know, we want, we would like more CHODOs to come. I would assume that that would probably be good if we could do more housing.
And so, the first-time homebuyer program really is to facilitate and to incentivize the purchase of CHODO homes?
To at least have that option out there.
Got it.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, with that said, I guess I'm not really opposed to having a few first-time homebuyer programs available so that there is more leverage.
I haven't opened the public hearing. I haven't opened the public hearing.
Oh, well, with that said, I think I understand much better, Curtis, of why you're proposing what you're proposing.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Mark, did you have something? Okay. I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers on this item.
And now, I'll close the public hearing. And once again, everybody has the freedom to make a proposal, or this would be a resolution of the plan that Curtis has talked about, and obviously, it has opportunities to be, we have the opportunity to pivot from everything that we've talked about tonight. So, I will give it back to the council, as long as you promise not to go over everything one more time in length.
Curtis, for clarification, real quick, if we took the first-time homebuyer assistance and shifted that over to rehabilitation, and there was a situation where the CHODOs were having difficulty moving, we could come back to the council at any time to try to amend that plan if there was the need for first-time homebuyer assistance at that time, correct?
Yes.
So, if we moved that over at this point, there's nothing limiting us from coming back if we do see a situation like that where our CHODO has told us that they're having challenges with that sort of situation, correct?
That's correct. And if I may also just offer something else, we already have $155,000 that has been approved by council for that sort of thing. So, the question, I guess, is for clarification on my part, do we want that to remain approved for that sort of thing, and then that could give us kind of a buffer, or just eliminate it altogether and change? So, that would be a question that I'd ask that the council give direction on to staff.
Okay. Shelby.
Well, I was about to propose just that, what Mark was suggesting, taking the current funds allocated for the first-time homebuyer program and redistributing them, splitting between tenant-based rental assistance and rehab, and recognizing that if it turned out to be necessary later because a CHODO-built home or rehabbed home just isn't getting filled, then we could switch gears and reallocate money back to that. But I would propose moving those over to rehab and tenant-based rental assistance now...
All of it, correct?
All of it, yes.
Just double-checking.
Also, and maybe this would require a separate discussion, I wanted to propose doing the same for all non-ChODO-based acquisition and resale funds. So, recognizing that for the 15% CHODO carve-out under the home funds, we're required to allocate a minimum 15% of that toward that purpose, but everything from CDGB, that we not use it toward acquisition and resale or new construction, but rather put it back into rehab, tenant-based rental assistance, and homelessness prevention.
Okay. And I just did get some information, and the two, at least the two houses that we have through Housing Channel, Jeanette came over and said, based upon the proposal now of not allowing that sort of funding, first-time homebuyer, she says at this point that they probably won't sell without that additional funding. So, that would be something we can, at least, if we want to wait until we get confirmation for that, and we can then substantially amend it, we will do that.
And Curtis, we typically come back in the July timeframe for an update on the action plan, correct? So, at that time, we could actually update council if there was not movement on those homes?
Yes, we can. And in addition, I mean, this is for the, you know, next five years, so it's not including the current timeframe that we're in.
When did these two homes come available?
They should be, they should be done by, I think, September 30th.
Okay, so they're not yet done?
Is what we're looking at? They need to be, okay, they need to be sold by September 30th.
Why do we think they will sell? Do we have...
Well, I'm gonna...
People picked out for them already, or...
So, there's no specific people stepped out, picked out right now for the projects. However, they will go on sale probably in June or July. As you can see, they're almost finished. So, they've advertised it already to the community at a community event a few weeks ago. If they don't sell, because these houses are going to appraise for a nice amount of money. When you think about the amount, the appraisal values of the houses in the area right now, that is the reason for the first-time homebuyer program, it's that minimum for these houses, because HUD says you must sell it at the market value that it's appraised for. Our concern by staff is that when these houses get appraised for the dollar amount they're going to, it's going to be more than the amount of money that's been placed in there already. When they get appraised, they're not going to be able, there will not be a low to moderate income homebuyer that is able to get a mortgage to buy it. That's the reason for the first-time homebuyer program, even if directed specifically just for these developer homes, because it has to be made affordable for them to purchase. If not, what happens is you'll have a property that is built that we will have to send all of the money back to HUD for. So, what happens is they'll give us the money back, and then we will have to wire it back to HUD, and we'll still have that money available to spend somewhere else. But that's the big concern, is you all taking the existing money that's already been approved for them to spend in a previous consolidated plan, and thinking about reallocating what you approved already is a concern for these two houses that are existing. So, that's the concern. Does that make sense?
That, yeah. So, first, how long have these homes been available to purchase? You said they have to be sold by September, October. How long have they been available to purchase?
So, no, they have to be sold to a low-income homebuyer by September 30th.
How long have they been available already?
They began being built in December, so they are working at building. So, in between getting plans from building inspections, they've been...
How long have they been available for somebody to say, I want to buy this home?
They are not available right now. They are on the final end of getting all of their building permits finalized. If you go by there now, if you drove over there, you will see that. So, they're not on sale yet. They're not on the market yet.
Because what I'm hearing seems to be making the case to not allocate money toward new home builds or resales, because it's going to be so hard to find somebody who's low-income to even move into them, requiring the additional funds for the first-time homebuyer program to even get them filled. Now, I understand that these are already built, it's too late for these two, but for future allocation of funds, it seems to be making the case not to use money for that. But with these, if, so if I understand correctly, they'll be available for sale within the next couple of weeks, is that right?
I don't want to say weeks, within the next couple of months. That is what the developer has said they're shooting for, so...
But then they're required to be sold by, was it September?
By no later than September 30th.
Okay, what happens if they're not?
All the money has to come back to the city, and then we return it back to HUD. So, I will tell you, that has not happened in the city's history. That is why you're coupling the two, the two programs together. What we're doing is something that is typical of what cities that are receiving HUD funds do, are amount. It's a standard thing to make a home affordable, especially in this market, that you couple the two. So, I'm just requesting on staff's side, as Curtis mentioned, that you all keep the money that has already been allocated in an existing consolidated plan, and then do as you're saying in the future plans.
That was, I'm not going to look at the material in front of me, that was $155,000, right, for first-time homebuyer?
Correct. $150 or $155, yeah.
Okay, if we're looking at two homes, what would be the maximum assistance for a first-time homebuyer program?
$55,000 apiece.
That's pretty hefty.
Based upon qualifications and other, I mean, that's the maximum. That's the cap, yes.
Okay.
And what's needed. So, HUD doesn't, HUD doesn't allow us to put more money into a home than what is needed. And so, if the first-time homebuyer doesn't need 55, they will not get 55,000. On average, we've seen them getting about 45. When we look at the numbers on this, that's more than likely what it's going to take to make these two homes affordable.
That's another area where I have the challenge of the first-time homebuyer program, because, yeah, I accept that most don't need 55, but if they're getting on average 45, I know a lot of people who would like to be first-time homebuyers and would love to get an extra $45,000, and maybe just barely don't qualify. I would have loved $45,000 when my wife and I got our first home in Plano. I have a philosophical challenge with the first-time homebuyer program.
I appreciate what you're saying, but we've got two on the ground that, you know, we, you know, we just let it go.
So...
So...
First-time homebuyer.
It has to be a qualifier.
That's right. It has to be a first-time homebuyer.
Qualified first-time homebuyer.
To buy these homes. It doesn't have to be a first-time homebuyer, right?
It doesn't have to be.
No. But the income qualifier is required.
Well, I would recommend...
Hold on, hold on. Let's, Maria, what were you going to say?
I was just going to say that I think at this point, since we come back to this over and over again on a quarterly basis, that at this point with the two existing homes, that we adopt what Curtis is proposing, and then come back and reevaluate it in a quarter, like in September, after these two homes are gone, right?
Yes.
Because otherwise, we would be losing how much money for these two homes? Not only the $200,000, but, well, I guess just the $200,000, we have to give it back to HUD.
It don't meet requirements, yes, ma'am.
But in this instance, not only are we losing the $200,000, we're losing the appraised value of the houses. The two houses that are currently on these two pieces of land, we're going to lose that too. Is that right?
Well, they'll still be out there, and I don't know the process. If we were to, if we had to send money back to HUD, how that all then plays out, I don't know.
So, is that house...
Yeah.
Yeah, who owns it at that time?
Still the developer.
So, the developer would own it. What the developer would do would just sell it and see who else...
In a free market?
In the free market, which that could mean to an investor who's going to put renters in there, or it could be a homebuyer.
So, at this point, Mr. Maria, I'm proposing that we adopt what Curtis is proposing at this point, and then come back and reevaluate our plan in September.
I've got four of y'all up, but do I have a second on that, or not? Okay, there is a second. So, Anthony, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first of all, Curtis, am I correct that we have more applicants for tenant-based rental assistance than we have funds for it?
Generally, we always have applicants for tenant-based, you know, whether or not they qualify and that sort of thing. That's correct.
And so, that's why I agree with what Councilmember Williams said and what Councilmember Prince has been saying, and I think I heard Councilmember Homer, Deputy Mayor Pretem Homer say it as well. I have a philosophical challenge with, you know, some, there are so many people in our community who have needs, you know, and for some people to get 45,000 and others to be on a waiting list for tenant-based rental assistance and not even get that, it feels like some people win the lottery and other people don't get help. And that's why I'd really like to see this money redeployed to tenant-based rental assistance so that the benefit is more widely dispersed, so that more people who are in need of help get help. That being said, I understand, you know, previous approvals, and if we've made commitments to CHODOs and they've built houses on that basis, I don't want to pull the rug out from under anybody. So, what I would propose is kind of the inverse of what Maria was saying, rather than wait until October, I mean, we're pretty deep into this, and we're going to have, half of us won't be here in October, so I'd love for us to make a decision tonight about how we're going to do business going forward. What I would propose is that, since 45,000 is the average, and there are two homes that are built that are on the ground, that Housing Channel has relied on the fact that there were going to be, you know, funds available for first-time homebuyer assistance, I would say, let's keep $90,000, you know, two times $45,000 of the existing $155,000 dedicated to these two houses, so that these two houses can be sold, and we don't leave Housing Channel in the lurch on something that they've relied on and already built a house on that basis. But I would also ask us, because tonight is when we are adopting our five-year consolidated plan, I'd ask us to make a five-year decision that we don't want to do more of this going forward, that we don't want to build houses that are not going to be able to be sold without first-time homebuyer assistance, and remove the homebuyer assistance program from the five-year plan.
Okay, we already have a motion on the table, so hold on to that, Anthony.
Okay, sure.
Casey?
What were you going to say?
Well, I support what Councilmember Rick Adeli said. Something about this just doesn't add up to me. It just seems, and maybe it is just the government, because sometimes things don't add up in the government, it seems very odd that they would give this money and then say you have to sell it at market value. Those two things just don't go to me, and so I'm having trouble supporting that. I can't wrap my head around how somebody who is low-income is going to afford a market house, and even if we give them this money, I'm struggling with how they're going to stay in the house. So, all of this, I just can't, I can't support. So, I would more likely support what Councilmember Rick Adeli is suggesting, but I still much more am in favor of keeping some people, helping them get their feet under them and keep them from being on the streets through the tenant-based rental, is what I feel stronger about.
So, how do you go about that? What are you, you're saying, what are we going to do? How is it actually...
I'm saying, I'm saying, I would rather all the money go to the other bucket of the...
What are you, you're saying, what are we gonna do? How's it actually at?
I'm saying, I would rather all the money go to the other bucket of the tenant-based rental, but if we have to make a compromise for these two houses, I would support what Anthony suggested, where we lower the mountain, just have 45,000 for these two houses and don't keep doing this.
I think you're saying 45,000.
I'll be happy to modify my motion to, you know, what Curtis is proposing. You are proposing, what, $155,000?
Yeah, leaving what has already been approved in the, in there, and then using, going forward, it would just be limited to those Chodos. Yeah, whatever, if we had...
So $245,000 down, first-time homebuyer credit. That's what Anthony is saying.
And then you're talking about the other 70, 65,000?
Yes, to redeploy to tenant-based rental assistance.
Rehabilitation and rent assistance.
And then what I, at least what I was suggesting was that then, going forward, we don't want to leave Housing Channel in the lurch on these two that are already on the ground, but going forward, we would say we're just not gonna be doing the first-time homebuyer down payment assistance anymore after these two sell.
Well, we can deal with the future in the future, but at this point, right now, right now, I'm willing to withdraw my motion and then modify the motion to what Anthony just said. So limiting the spending of the money of $150,000 to...
90.
$90,000 for, to be split into two different down payments. And then the remainder of the money to go to, to be spread out as proposed by Councilman Rick Adelli.
Everybody okay with that?
Shelby?
Just to clarify, one of the suggestions I made earlier as well before we got off on the first-time homebuyers was to also reallocate any non-Choto acquisition, resale, new build funding and spread those amongst rehab and tenant-based rental assistance as well. Are you willing to include in that as well?
I have no idea what you're saying.
Okay, so along with the first-time homebuyer funds that we're talking about now and we're hitting a compromise to just set aside enough for those two homes, though what I was gonna say originally was if they're not even gonna be available for sale for two more months, and then Curtis was saying we can look at amending this come July, then if we think we need it come July, that's a little more than two months from now, we can always amend it to provide, restore the first-time homebuyer funds, like Mark was suggesting. We can always put it back in later if it looks like it's gonna be needed before, well before the September deadline.
I don't think that it works that way.
So, and just, because we got, just for clarification, I think we have two things going on. Because we've got the current five-year plan that we're still in, and that's the $150,000 that we're talking about, you know, reallocating that money. And then we've got this new plan that is gonna go for five years. So, and so my understanding is, is you want to allocate the, at least $150,000, change that to 90,000, and then going forward on the next five-year plan, we'll remove first-time homebuyer completely. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, and then there is the second thing that I was talking about, but I'll just, I'll just offer that as an amendment in the moment, to not muddy the waters.
Rick?
Yeah, thank you. And my concern here is we already had this approved at one time, and we're trying to line up buyers for the Chodo homes. Let me tell you what my experience is with the federal government. If you give money back to the federal government, the next time you ask for federal money, you're not gonna get the same amount that you got your first time. So I hate giving money back to the federal government. I hate it. I hate writing my check every quarter to the federal government. My point being here is that you have this opportunity, free money from the federal housing authority, and to offer first-time homebuyer assistance on a plan that was already approved by this August body. I don't know why you want to change it now. Whereas in the next five years, you could certainly make those changes and amendments. But my concern here is if we don't follow Curtis' lead here, we're gonna have to turn back 250,000 back to the feds? Is that the number, 200,000? Well, you're not gonna get that back in next year. You just won't. Not for the next, not in the next cycle. Am I correct on that?
If, yeah, if they don't sell them by September 30th.
That funding, they'll come back, that's why we have to write a check to the federal government. So when you ask for that new funding, it's gonna be about $230,000 short. Use it or lose it.
Then what they qualify for, though. We can't just give them 150,000.
But at that point, if we built two houses and we gave them 45,000 or 50,000, it's not up to us, it's up to the person who qualifies. We have no way to be able to guess that. Our limit's 55. But that's where, that's where the issue is.
Yep, we're just talking about approving the funding, but the plan, I think we're confused. I think we're trying to recreate the plan.
Yeah, we got the old funding and then the new plan, proposed five-year plan.
Right. Shelby, real quick.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Horn. I think with the compromise that Councilman Rick Adelli proposed, we're not at risk of losing the $300,000. We're gonna carve out some of the first-time homebuyer funds right now to hold in reserve for those two homes. We're just not gonna use first-time homebuyer funds going forward in the plan.
Which is exactly what we're doing today. I mean, we were here for the public hearing to consider the next five years, right?
Correct.
Not the current year, but the next five years.
Correct.
All right, so I know you paid me to ask you this, but could you repeat your motion?
My motion is to approve and adopt the proposed plan as proposed by Curtis, or Curtis Howard, with the amendment that is, that was proposed by Councilman Rick Adelli with regard to first-time homebuyer program.
And I think I'll second that, I just want a clarification real quick. So we're talking about the upcoming five-year plan that we're adopting tonight would not include the first-time homebuyer program at all?
Right, except to resolve these two houses.
Well, except, I thought we were saying that's already in the old plan. We've already allocated the money. So to resolve these two houses, if I'm correct, we don't need to include that in the new five-year plan at all, right?
Right.
Okay, so is that, is that what we're saying? It would not at all be in the new five-year plan? It's just the money that's already allocated?
Is that right, Curtis?
And that's correct, so the new five-year plan, my understanding is the council wants us to remove it, and then right now...
Then I'm gonna withdraw all my motions and then we'll just start over. Because if the next five years is not gonna include the first-time homebuyer, then...
Because the document, I think, includes it, but what we can do is we can say, adopt it as presented, except removing the first...
Say, make the motion to adopt the resolution for '25 to '29 and remove first-time...
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Protam. So I will move to adopt the consolidated plan as presented in the packet for '25 through '29, except with the change that we entirely remove the first-time homebuyer program from the upcoming five-year consolidated plan for '25 through '29.
Good.
It says second by Casey's.
You did that telepathically.
Okay. Who's, did you second that? Okay. All right, second. All right, so I have a motion as second. Shelby?
This is where I'd like to offer the amendment. It should be quick to also remove any non-Choto acquisition, resale, or new development funds from the new '25-'29 plan. Maria still doesn't understand what I just said.
Well, no, but didn't Anthony cover that with no first-time buyer?
I thought that was just for the first-time homebuyer.
So is that, is that a separate issue, Curtis?
So just maybe for clarification, is, so that 75% bucket there, it allows us to acquire and resell a house. And I think that was the issue that we had back with the Plano Housing Authority when we did that.
Right.
We're not doing that. We're not purchasing houses. I mean, if it's, is gonna be going through the Chodo. So, I mean, you can amend it, but we don't have that capacity to do that sort of thing.
So what Councilmember Williams was saying, we're not planning to do that anyway?
Are there any funds allocated in the plan to do that?
Well, so that 75%, like that Habitat for Humanity fund right there, I mean, Habitat could. We wouldn't do so. The housing rehabilitation for residents for the city of Plano, we are just rehabbing houses. We're not acquiring or reselling. So that funding could go to Habitat in the future if they wanted to, if they wanted to. Under the, under the non-Chodo...
And that's what I'm talking about. There's two carve-outs for Habitat for Humanity. One, under the Chodo, minimum 15%. And then there's an additional, looks like 18%-ish, that's allocated for the same use, but not under the minimum Chodo requirement.
It would be for Habitat if they were, if they wanted to do it, but not under the, you know, if they decide not to become a Chodo again. Still do it, but...
And that's the amount, the 405,000, that I would like to see not used for acquisition, resale, or new construction.
Okay.
If the council agrees.
I mean, but do we, do we have authority?
So that 405 is from this past year. So what'll happen is, is your recommendations will go to the CRC. And then the CRC, after all the nonprofits ask, because I don't even know if they're asking for that, then they could, when they allocate that money, allocate that money for specific purposes.
Understood that we're looking back, but I mean, in the '25 to '29 plan, are we earmarking funds for, outside of that 15% Chodo for acquisition?
Since we're going through the CRC right now and the nonprofits are giving their presentations, I don't know if that's what they're looking for or not. I just don't have that information. They're, they will be proposing that, but those recommendations from the CRC haven't been decided. And what'll happen is I will come back to you with those recommendations. And if you're saying that you don't want acquisition or resale, you know, CRC will know that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
That's what I'm saying, so I'll just offer that as an amendment.
Okay.
Move to amend that we not allocate such funds in the '25 to '29 plan toward acquisition, resale, or new home construction outside of the minimum 15% Chodo.
And I don't know if it's easier, I'd be okay incorporating that in my motion if that's still agreeable to everyone. I don't know if that's simpler than the, okay, so... Okay, I'm sorry, I guess I'll try to restate my motion one more time. I think this should encompass what Councilmember Williams was talking about. So I move that we adopt the consolidated plan for '25 through '29 as presented in the packet, with the exceptions, first, that we entirely remove the first-time homebuyer program from the '25 through '29 consolidated plan and not allocate any funds toward that for the '25 through '29 plan period. And secondly, that we remove the acquisition and resale portion, that $405,000 that Councilmember Williams was talking about from the '25 through '29 consolidated plan.
If I may, there is not $405,000 allocated.
Oh, that, was the 405,000 from the...
Just say acquisition.
Okay, acquisition and resale, okay. So let me, let me change that again. So the second part, just change that to acquisition and resale without the mention of the $405,000.
Got all that, Lisa?
Did that make any sense at all?
Yeah, second it.
Got it.
Do we need to vote for his? No, no, he's got a full, new motion.
Well, he amended his motion.
Yes, so, so here we go.
So Shelby is second.
Go ahead, go, no, Anthony, Anthony did it.
Anthony made the motion, I'm looking for my second. It was Casey, he amended his, so I didn't know if she was following, but she's changing it to Shelby.
Yeah, Shelby.
All right, we're good.
Okay, so I have a motion as second to approve Anthony's motion for item number two. Please vote. Okay, so motion passes, wait. Yeah, motion passes six to one, seven to one.
Six to one.
Oh, that's right, Rick's gone, sorry. All right. All right, there being no further business, meeting's adjourned.
Okay.
A century later, Plano continues to follow many of the same guidelines from Marvin Springer's original comprehensive plan.
Communities will still be built, they'll still go on, but if you have a comprehensive...